I'd like to call this meeting of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners to order. It is an interesting, unprecedented time. The Commissioners have spread out on the dais up here to maintain our social distancing and our county staff is actually away from the camera if you're watching at home tonight. And we have a room set up to the side with any public comment and speakers with our county attorney. So if you would like to make public comment and get down here, perhaps, you know, you'll have an opportunity to. I would first like to ask Commissioner Lohhan to ask the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would bow with me, please. Father, we do thank you for this, another day of life, the opportunities that it brings, even under these circumstances. Lord, we know that you are still in control, total control, and we know that this virus will pass. And we just pray that those that are sick by this virus, that you would touch and heal in a way that you see fit. Just be with us as we make decisions. Let those decisions be good for our citizens, good for our county, which will be good for our state. These things I pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an additional item to renaming of the County Commissioner Board Meeting Room.
Commissioner Allman has made a motion to add an additional item. I'll say that will be number eight, naming of the Commons Meeting Room. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of adding the additional item and approving the agenda as amended, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number one on the agenda tonight is a Rules of Procedure Amendment to address electronic meetings. Presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment to the rules of procedure is really as a result of what we're going through with the COVID-19 and giving the board the flexibility to be able to have electronic, virtual meetings when there's a state of emergency that's been declared. And so you've got the revisions that have been highlighted in yellow in your agenda packet, and the action is to consider and either approve or deny those amendments to allow and provide guidance for you all to have electronic meetings.
Thank you, County Manager. Are there any questions? Commissioner Jordan has made a motion to approve the amendment as presented in our packet. Commissioner Morgan has made a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number two is a resolution on public hearings. Again, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, lots of public hearings are statutorily required. During this Governor's Executive Order 121, staff believes that you have the autonomy to decide what's essential and what's not essential. And we believe that having these statutorily approved public hearings, whether it be for economic development incentives that help move our community forward with economic prosperity, could be a rezoning, could be, you know, a special ordinance that you need to take in order to take some action to protect health and human safety. And so we believe that you can, you, these public hearings should be deemed essential, and just wanted you to reaffirm that through a resolution that states that you feel as though during this time of the Governor's Executive Order 121, that you will continue to have statutorily required public hearings as an essential service. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Did you hear what we said during this time, or is it?
Yes, yes, sir. It's during, it's during this, the Governor's Executive Order number 121.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution declaring statutory public hearings essential for county business.
Motion from Commissioner Allman. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any discussion on the resolution as presented? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number three, Project Blue Sky, North Carolina DOT Rail Infrastructure Support Resolution. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is just a requirement of the Division of Rail, the Department of Transportation. They wanted a resolution from us, basically saying that we were supportive of this project, that we would work collaboratively with them to make the needed transportation improvements, that we would endorse their application for funding, and confirm that the plans that they have are consistent with state laws and local plans and the like. So really, just as sort of a pro forma resolution, the DOT Rail needs in order to finalize their application for funding for Project Blue Sky. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for the County Manager?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
This is coming out of the state budget, I'm sure, but you got a price on or a cost, estimate of what this is going to cost the state?
I did not bring the rail. I can get those for you. I have the spreadsheet in my office, but I didn't bring it with me. I want to say the rail was in the, they're getting a North Carolina Railroad grant, which I believe is one and a half million dollars. And then they're also getting close to, before I say, give a commitment, if you want to take a recess as we get closer, I can go get my spreadsheet, or I can send it to you after the meeting. It's, it's, it's either several hundred thousand dollars or over a million dollars in rail funding from, from the state. And then the roads are considerable as well. That's several million dollars in addition for road improvements.
Would you like to have a copy of that?
Yeah, certainly. I have it all on a spreadsheet.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lohan.
Not a question, but a motion to support the resolution for the Blue Sky project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lohan, a second, I believe by Commissioner Allman. Is there any other discussion on supporting the resolution for Project Blue Sky? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number four is an NCDQ grant funding application resolution. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Asking the board's approval of resolution that, for, to apply for some NCDQ funding. Really, this will be to assist us with making some improvements to the Richfield Sewer Collection System, the SCADA, which is, that's a sort of electronics, the telemetry, so we kind of know what's flowing through the system. If there's issues with pump stations and other things, it sends out alarms and alerts so that we don't have to manually go up and check them every day, just, you know, from an efficiency perspective. So that, that'll be part of the, what we would use that funding for, and also to make some repairs out near the airport road where we've had some inflow infiltration that's causing our bill to go up with the city, because you've got, it's not just, it's not your sewer flow, it's groundwater that's flowing in, whether rainwater or groundwater, one of the two. And so we're going to try to, try to navigate and figure out where some of those exact infiltration and inflow issues are, so we can shore that up so that we're, our bill with the city will go down. And so that's how we're going to plan to use this funding, is to make some repair and maintenance issues, both in the Richfield system and the Palestine area. And this is a 50/50 grant, and obviously, this would come back before you. If we get approved, we come back to you and say, you know, do you want to accept this funding, do a budget amendment, et cetera. But this resolution's required in order for, to endorse the application that we will send forth to DEQ. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the County Manager?
I have one. This does not commit any funding, correct?
No, it does not.
This is just for the application.
This is just saying, we, we, the board's aware that we're applying for these funds.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Seek a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to seek grant funding.
Motion from Commissioner Allman to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number five tonight will be the award of the Webb Road Water Main Extension. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received four bids from Heron Industrial, RDR, State Utility Contractors, and BRS for this project. That bid, those bids are in the bid tab that's included in your packet. I believe it's on the third page of the agenda item. The low base bid was from Heron in the amount of $458, $394.26, and another alternative, which was $52, $183, for the total, for the base bid, and the alternative being $510, $577.34. And this will be for the Webb Road extension that'll go down towards Oak Grove. And we're asking the board to award this contract to Heron and Industrial Incorporated for both the base bid and the alternative, in the amount of $510, $577.34. One of the items that we'll have on the May 4th special, a special meeting, will be the budget amendment that's going to be required, because when the board authorized this project, you said that, you know, we had, we had set aside a certain amount of dollars in the utility fund budget this year for projects such as this, but the board decided to move forward with this one, and it was beyond the scope of what we had put in the budget. I think it was $240,000. And so, and the board, the board at that time said, proceed with it, get it engineered. We're fine with putting general fund money towards this because of the public health issues that we have in that part, part of the county due to the water quality. And so this will require a budget amendment where we'll come back and do a, move the money from the utility fund, put some additional money from the general fund so that we can sign these contracts. So we'll move forward. We're getting the contracts prepared, and then on May 4th, we'll bring that budget amendment back before you. So the action tonight is just to award the contract to Heron so we can get moving with the contract developed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Yes. Mr. Lucas.
Yes.
Heron Industrial, they're located out close to Mount Pleasant.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty much all these firms are all in the, in the general area. I know RDR is Heron and BRS. Obviously, BRS is based here. And so, you know, the majority of these firms are actually from the general area. I think BRS is actually the only one. RDR, I think, has got some tie to Stanley County, but.
They're in the Mission area.
Yes, I think so.
Who is State Utility?
I'm not 100% sure. I do know they do a lot of work throughout the state, and I know they've bid on our jobs before. I'll be honest, typically, they've been higher in a lot of their bids than RDR and Heron. I believe Heron used to be named something else, and they were, I think they did some work for us on another project, and that, that issue came up about who Heron was, and they had been repurchased by another company.
Is RDR in Stanley County, or they?
Mission.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I just had, I was just wanting to know, what is the alternate, alternative A bid? Like, the extra $52,000 on top of the base bid?
I think they're going to do an extension into a 16-lot subdivision off of Webb Road. I think that's the proposal for that additional $52,000. It's going to kind of go in, I think it's maybe mobile, mobile home area, or maybe some smaller, smaller, smaller dense lots that are right there, and they're going to be able to hit, they're going to be able to go in there and hit and pick up those, so we get additional customers. So that's, that's what that is. I think it's St. Ang's, St. Ang's Drive. I think that's the name.
Are we committed to take the low bid, or is there, in my opinion, if RDR is in Stanley County, $10,000 is well worth it to keep it in Stanley County?
I would have to ask our attorney, and she's listening, and you may give her a few minutes, because there's about a 15-second delay from, from here.
Jenny, if you, if you could hear us in about 10 seconds, would, would you step over to the main meeting room, please?
I do know that Heron is, flip a coin, it could have been in Stanley County, but the way they drew the lines, it's not.
They're very close. I mean, it's right there. Like Bill said, it's, it's within a stone's throw.
And I know both of these companies are owners of the year. Heron or RDR, or, like, RDR's been around a long time. Heron may have, I'm not sure if he ever worked for RDR, but.
I believe RDR did the Browns Hill Road, when we extended the water line down Browns Hill Road, I'm pretty sure RDR did that work. And I think they actually did some of the work for the water and sewer through the NJR group who got the bid on, actually, Riverstone. I think, I think RDR got the subcontract on that.
Jenny, here, you have a question.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. I believe by statute, you are bound to require, or you are required to award the bid to the responsive, responsible low bidder.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't believe there's a local exception to any of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move the, we award the Webb Road Water Extension Project to Heron Industries for both the base bid and the alternative bid, in the amount of $510,000, $577.34.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'm going to go with Commissioner Farr, to accept the bid for $510,000, $577.34 for the Webb Road Water Main Extension for Heron Industrial Incorporated. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number six is the fiscal year 1920 Audit. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The audit and fee came in consistent with this year's fee, $48,500, as well as the Medicaid audit for $5500. The only difference this year, or the 1920 budget in that contract from 1819, will be the pension attest audit that the state treasurer, we were lucky enough to be one of the ones that were randomly selected to do the pension attest audit in fiscal year 1920. And so that's going to require a separate engagement with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company for $4,950. And it's my understanding, the school system also was one of the lucky ones chosen for a pension attest audit as well. So hopefully, that will be something that only comes around every so often, and not, doesn't become a yearly piece to our, to our audit. But from a price perspective, other than this special pension attest, the price is again the same. I think this is the third consecutive year that the price on the audit has remained the same. So we're very pleased. And I think there was a little bit of transition, you know, when we changed from our auditor that we had for a number of years to this auditor. But I think generally, it's been fairly smooth the last couple of years. Hasn't been, really been an issue for staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the County Manager?
I do have a question. I remember when we had another audit firm, and we asked for it to be rebid, and there were concerns about changing, but it went smoothly, which I'm glad to hear. How long have we been with this company now?
We made that decision my first year on the board.
I think, yeah, I was going to say, I think this may be our third or fourth, this is at least our third year with them. I think this will be our third audit in the 1920, the year we're getting ready to end here in a couple of months, will be our third audit with Thompson, Price.
Thank you.
And before that, we were with Martin Starnes, I believe was the, or not attorneys, but accounts.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jordan.
Have you seen Thompson, Price, Scott? Have you seen them since the 15-year campaign from the August?
A motion from Commissioner Jordan to approve the audit company for fiscal year 1920. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven is a COVID-19 discussion regarding economic impact and the stay-at-home order. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll kick this off, but I may defer to Commissioner Lohan, who had actually spoken with me and asked that I put something together for the board's discussion this evening on this topic. And really, the fact that the pandemic's had a significant impact on our local economy, you all know that. Obviously, you know small business owners and friends and family. Some of you are small business owners, and so certainly, there's been an impact. And that's set to expire April 30th. We don't, at this point, know what the governor's going to do, whether he'll extend that order or modify it in some way. And some other counties have asked for the autonomy to be able to do their own thing, instead of having sort of a one-size-fits-all for the entire state. So Bill had asked me to put this on the agenda for the board to engage in some discussion about, you know, if there's something you want communicated to the governor's office in terms of, you know, Stanley County. If you, you know, I know Gaston and Lincoln specifically have said, we want the ability to be able to, we, we are the government that's closest to the people, and we should be the ones who make any decisions on stay-at-home orders and the like, and so, and how our businesses reopen, and what that, what that looks like. But I'd be more than happy to defer to Bill, if you want to say anything more, Bill.
I'd be happy to say a few comments. First of all, I don't think anybody up here wants to see anyone else die from this disease. But I also know that our economy locally is suffering. I know that there's a lot of employers that are still operating because they're essential businesses, but there's also a lot of workers, to name a few, hairdressers, barber shops, nail salons, restaurant workers, the majority of them, that are not working. I know a lot of people are working, but there's a lot that are not. And you start thinking about the numbers, and how negative this is going to be on our local economy, much less our state or national economy. And I'm very concerned about our economy. I'm very concerned about people getting sick from COVID-19. And Matthew, you can speak firsthand about your case. I'm thankful, I don't think it was one that put you in the hospital, which I'm thankful it was not. But I do think that we need to urge the governor, whether we get the responsibility of making the decision to reopen businesses, all businesses, I still think we need to urge the governor not to delay just because he can delay. Because, I don't know, I don't know who's going to get COVID-19. I do know, and I'm speaking from a personal standpoint, if I keep my hands washed, and I keep my distance, and they say six feet is the distance that you need, and I don't know how they determine that. But I think if I do those things, then I think I stand a better chance of not getting COVID-19. If I don't do those, then yeah, I probably could contract COVID-19. I'm 68 years old, so I'm in a high-risk group. I'm a diabetic, which makes me high-risk also. But do I worry about COVID-19? I'm sorry, I do not worry personally about contracting COVID-19. And if I do contract COVID-19, I'm going to do everything I can to beat it with the medical professionals that we have. But I'm very concerned about our economy. I think most of you up here would say the same thing. But if we don't do anything but send a letter to the governor urging that he not punish Stanley County, we have 20 cases, to my knowledge, that's correct, I think, right now. 11 are active, which means, I know for a fact, we've had three deaths. And I think those three deaths, two of those were nursing facilities that were elderly people with complications. One was a death from someone that traveled out of state, but I understand they had complicated issues also, and they were in their 60s. And the good news is, we've had six recoveries, and I hope that some of these active cases of 11 will recover soon. Hopefully, we won't have any more cases. Do I think we will not? No, I think we'll have more cases. But when you talk about a population of 62,000 people, and we've only had 20 cases, I think Stanley County's done a good job trying to keep these cases low. I think the social distancing has helped. I think people started washing their hands more often. I know I have. And I know that I'm not going to a retail outlet where the parking lot's full and risk going in. I will go to the stores that I need to go to, but I'm going to make sure I'm socially distanced, and I'm going to make sure my hygiene's good. That's all I've got to say, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. County Manager Lucas. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I'll just, I guess, add to Commissioner Lohan. I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Lohan just said. I'm, as a small business owner myself, I'm in that same boat, so my guys aren't working. So I can feel the pain. I think it's time to reopen North Carolina. But if we just send this to the governor, if, at the very least, if we can have some sort of, I guess, power county by county, kind of like Gaston has sent out, I mean, we have to do it smart, reopen smartly, which I think we can. But I think it's doing more damage keeping our state closed, and all these businesses closed, than it is, than anything. And I think it's past time. And I'd like to see this sent to the governor, as well, well as both our legislators, Representative Sasser and Senator Ford. I'd like to see all of them. That way, we at least have a voice up in Raleigh when they do go back into session. So I'd like to see this, a letter sent to all three of them, personally.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ditto what Ashley and Bill said also. I think our local economy's taking a beating with this, and I think that, just like Bill said a second ago, our citizens aren't dumb. They, they know how to use their personal discretion, and I think we need to reopen as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Allman. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jordan.
I'll just be the little, the single voice of dissent on this one, but only to a small degree. I do not think we need to send the governor a letter requesting the counties have authority to open themselves. There's a specific reason that I disagree with what you said. I don't think people inherently are smart, and I think they've been stuck at home for too long, caged up for too long. And if, if for some reason, the governor were to grant the authority to a certain county to open its borders or, or open its businesses at its discretion, or at our, let, let, let's be very clear, at our discretion, what you would wind up with is a reality that maybe Stanley County would open on Monday, and Mecklenburg, who has a much higher sick rate, or Cabarrus, who has a much higher rate of infection, would not open up the same day, and we would wind up with all of their people here. Our hair salons would get overrun on day one. Walmart would not only be out of, most things, it'd be out of everything, because our stores would all be open. Our restaurants would be flooded with people from out of counties. So I do think that doing the whole state at once is So I do think that doing the whole state at once is a good idea for both a retail standpoint, from a, if there were a tactical standpoint. People, I don't think, understand how bad it's going to be when we really do reopen. When you go hit, I mean, the first day that every restaurant in town is allowed to open up, they may or may not have staff members, they certainly won't have food supplies, they won't have any dairy, because we have people pouring out seventeen thousand gallons of milk a day because they can't sell it. There's going to be a lot of challenges to reopening, just like there are, just like there were to shutting down. So I want us to open back up. I want us to open back up as soon as possible. But I would not like to have the additional burden of having it on a county-by-county, whatever each individual board thinks. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we do need to urge the governor to do something, and I think we have to admit that if we follow the president's plan or advice, I mean, today is the, today is the twentieth, am I right?
Twentieth.
We were to follow the president's advice, and we started showing a decline today, we would be somewhere around March fourth, before we'd even qualify to start hitting phase one of his plan, which is another two weeks out. I don't think his, I think his plan is good in a perfect world. I don't think we happen to live in a perfect world right now. So I think if the governor waits that long, we'll be in trouble. I think he needs to do something on accelerated timetable, with the knowledge that we have to accept that if we open up before it's too, before the medical people say we're ready, we are going to increase the number of people that die from this. Not a tremendous amount, not a huge amount, but we will have an impact. There will be some deaths more than there would have been otherwise, because we will surge the medical community and the hospitals a little bit. And we've been doing a good job of keeping that down. But I agree that we cannot, our economy can't just stay sitting still forever because of health reasons. You can't do that. So I would encourage the governor to do something, and I would encourage the governor to find a plan to open us back up as quick as possible. I definitely am on board with that, but I would not necessarily, I would not encourage the governor to give each county the ability to open up on their own time.
Any other questions?
Comment. I know Ashley recommended a letter, I think it was Ashley that recommended, and I agree with you, but we also have another representative that covers a small part of Stanley County, District Six, yeah, Brewer, so we need to include him on any kind of letter.
My only comment, you know, this is, and to some extent, I guess I've lived it, I don't know how else to say that. I didn't have it as bad as some, I didn't, you know, had it worse than others, and not as bad as some, I guess is the best way to put it. You know, my thought is, is it's not something we can afford to cripple our economy with. And my personal, very political opinion is, is I don't trust the governor to pull us out of this. That is a very personal, very political opinion, but I don't. Because even in his own press conference the other day, he said, we need to make a plan, which means he doesn't even have one to get us out of this. And the other reason I don't trust him to pull us out of it is because two days before he did this executive order, every county commissioner in this state was invited to a teleconference with the governor's office, and the governor stated, I don't think we should do a stay-at-home order. Two days later, he issued Executive Order 121, and in two paragraphs in this executive order, he states, because county commissioners failed to act, I'm issuing a stay-at-home order. So he threw us under the bus right there, after he told us not to do it. So that's my problem with it. I think we're, we are closer to the people of Stanley County. I do happen to trust most business owners in Stanley County to use common sense, a barber shop to say, take appointments, or, you know, I'm only going to let three people in the shop at a time, hairdressers, whatever. I trust those people to make those decisions. You know, I think it was Walmart that made the decision on their own before anybody said anything about it to limit the number of people in their stores. If Walmart can make that decision, I feel like our local business owners can make that decision. You know, I just, that's just the way I feel, and I wholeheartedly support a letter to put control back on the county level, but it's my opinion.
Is there anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, you were talking about beauty shops. My daughter-in-law and her sister run a beauty shop, and I called and talked with her a little bit about what kind of restrictions could you operate under and still operate? And she, she said that she could wear gloves, she could wear a mask, and she said that if we were allowed to reopen, we'd have four beauticians, and no more than four people would be in any given chair, which are separated by space more than six feet. And then if the others come by appointment, and they got there before their appointment time, they would ask them to stay in their car until it's time. So yes, you're right, business owners, if there were restrictions, social distancing, wearing gloves if you're working on somebody's hair, wearing a mask to protect yourself, encourage your client to wear a mask if you can, then they could operate. But as it is now, they're not cutting hair, coloring hair, any of that.
They're not making money.
They're not making any money, and the governor sent them documents that says, if we catch you cutting someone's hair, you're going to lose your license. And they've had pressure put on them by customers, let me come to your house and cut, you can cut my hair or color it there. It don't work that way, because they're not supposed to be doing it out of their house to begin with. And I'm sure there's some, what we want to call underground beauty salons going on right now. I guarantee you, they are. But the ones that are following it to the T, they're not cutting, coloring, or doing any of that. And yeah, you're right, she don't have any money coming in. And guess what? She didn't, she did not get to participate in the payroll protection program, because she's a sole proprietor. And she didn't. But guess what? She still has payments on that beauty shop, along with her sister. And yes, those are the kind of jobs, folks, I mean, I was a banker for forty-two years, and let me tell you, people in Stanley County, and I would even add to Montgomery County and several other counties around us, those business owners aren't getting rich. They're making enough money to pay themselves a paycheck, and that's about it. They're not like the folks in these metropolitan areas that, you know, self-employed business owners, in most cases, should deserve a big reward from being self-employed. People in Stanley County are self-employed because they want to make a living, and they know they're not going to get rich, but we got to get them open back up.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a few more comments. One point is, some of our neighboring counties have already sent a letter like this, and I know for a fact, Union County did it today, so, not, I'm not trying to debunk your point, Tommy, I'm just saying that, you know, they're not, folks from Charlotte would not necessarily flood to here more, I think they would flood to Monroe or Waxaw or somewhere like that faster than they would flood to, say, Locust or Albemarle. Our churches, our churches are taking a hit. I've talked to a few pastors in our community, and if they're not at the church, they're not tithing. And not, 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 some of our small, older churches, you know, they just pass around the plate on Sunday, they don't have online giving. And I talked to one pastor who told me that they were ten thousand dollars below, but below what they usually are per month. They can't keep operating like that, you know, and I plan to support those folks tomorrow in Raleigh. We've got to reopen everything. We got to get back to normal sooner than later.
Mr. Irvin.
Mr. Fur.
I'd just like to go on the record that I'm with the letter. I'm all for sending the letter out to open up, try to do what we can do to get people working again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, we, I think one more.
One of my, one of my very best friends owns a hair salon. She's the proprietor, you know, and that's, that's a market that got hurt right out of the gate. And I agree, can't remember who said it, I think, I think you said it, Commissioner Lohman, but you know, that, that business owners are smart. I agree, they are. It's not business owners that worry me, it's the general public that's going to go hit these businesses. If people could, if people were able to do what they're supposed to do, we wouldn't have the problems we're having now. We have, we have people monitoring the coming and going of food trucks right now. We have people monitoring going to, you know, keeping an eye on, we have increased police presences at, at, at food truck deliveries. I don't know if everybody knows that, because people are trying to scope out what trucks they can and can't rob. I mean, it's getting bad out there. Businesses are in trouble. The hair salon industry, most people don't know that salon owners, they don't have employees, they have none. There's no such thing as a salon stylist employee. They're all independent business owners, just like I am. They just, and my guys are the same way. I mean, my engineers aren't working. They've done, I've had three days of work in two months. It's horrible, it sucks. I wanted to be back open. I just, especially with most of my clients being government, government's not working, they're at home. I really do want to see us back open. I just, I want to be sure that we, we find some way to, I guess, keep people calm when we open the floodgates, because that's what it's going to be like. It's going to be like a stampede. The first day, you let everybody out. It's like you've kept them all behind a fence. The moment you pop that gate, you better get out of the way. And I hope that doesn't happen. I'm just afraid that it's going to. And you're right, people would go to Cabarrus County or Union County before they'd come here. I guess in my analogy, I was thinking, we're open and they're not. But, you know, we got to do something, we have to, but I'm sure there's ninety-nine other boards having the same discussion with probably the same feelings. I wish one of us had an answer. I don't necessarily agree with everything the governor does. I mean, I'm a Republican, the governor's a Democrat. Obviously, I didn't vote for him, but I can't think of anything I'd have necessarily done different right now. I, I'm the first armchair quarterback, but I guess I don't have any better ideas. I think all of us, we are blessed right now as a board that we're not having to make these decisions, because right now, we keep hearing the words uncharted waters. We would be living those words if we were in charge of what had to happen. None of us are qualified to make these decisions either. None of us have entire executive cabinets and councils putting together advice for us all day long, well, we do, but bless your heart, Andy, I don't think, that's a lot of work for y'all to do. I don't, I don't want to pick on any official that's had to be in the hot seat during this. I do think we need to give advice where we think we have it, and we need to encourage them to get things open as fast as possible. If there's some good advice that we can send to Raleigh, let's do it. Send it to Wayne, send it to Carl, send it to everywhere we got to send it, but if there's something that, if anybody's got an idea to get this state open faster, I'd love to hear it, and I'd be glad to support it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I think, listening to everybody speak, I know Commissioner Jordan's, and I understand where he's coming from on that, but I think it's time to do something. I mean, nowhere in this history of our country has government ever sit here and basically wholeheartedly shut down the entire economy and businesses. I mean, that goes against our constitution as itself, so I want to make a motion to give Chairman Swain and county staff to draft a letter, request, demanding, requesting, however you want to state it, we reopen North Carolina, and if they're not willing to, to give counties that option, the power to reopen our county by county, if he's not willing to do that starting May first. So, and I'd like to have that letter sent to all of our representatives, Brewer, Sasser, and Ford, as well as the governor. That's my motion.
Does everybody understand the motion? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, I think a second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number eight tonight was an addition at the beginning of the meeting for the potential renaming of the Commons Meeting Room, that is, the room we are currently in. I believe that was potentially brought up by Commissioner Almond, so I'm going to turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, I approached Andy about just having a resolution passed in honor of Gene, his service to the board, and Andy kind of, Andy sort of mentioned that we could potentially name a room after Gene within the county facility, and I said, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea, and let me bring it to the board. So, you know, I've called all you guys and wanted to present it to you today. So I've known Gene pretty much my whole life. Gene and my grandfather Jerry, who passed away three years ago tomorrow, were good friends, and they were actually running buddies back in the day. Gene was a staple in and around the northern end of the county. He was a graduate of Appalachian State and spent his career as an educator and served on this board, and the seat that I currently hold for twenty years, and that's a whole lot of board meetings and a whole lot of budget meetings. Gene's dedication to public service and community should be an inspiration to us all. And that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rename the Commons Meeting Room, the meeting room where the board holds its regular meetings, to the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room.
All right. A motion from Commissioner Almond to rename the room we're currently in to the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room, or Commissioner Meeting Room.
It's currently referred to as the Commons Meeting Room, so, I mean, you could name it.
The Gene McIntyre Meeting Room, Commissioner Almond.
I think that's fine, yes, sir.
Well, there are other boards meeting here other than the commissioner, so even if you named it the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room, I think that would certainly cover all the various boards that do meet in here.
So there's a motion in a second to rename the room we're currently in to Gene McIntyre Meeting Room, there are discussions.
I have one thought. I did not have the knowledge of Commissioner McIntyre that well. I know who he was, I've been interviewing him a couple times. That was about me since I'm, of I'm acting, but like you said, he served for twenty years. Considering what we're going through right now time-wise, the fact that it is such a, I don't know, I feel like if we're going to do that, it deserves a little more pomp. This is, I like the idea. I guess my suggestion was, maybe can we wait until we can have a normal meeting and have people here that would support him, that would be his family, people that could appreciate the honor and the distinction that he's being given?
I think Andy is, I think Andy's planning to do something similar to what we did with Chairman Swain, you know, where we had something at the.
So we, we approve the idea now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I know that we're having to do these special call meetings, and we're having to put this stuff in the paper, and I know that we've already worked with the attorneys from Project Blue Sky to call this the Commons Meeting Room for our May fourth. So if we could make this effective, maybe June first, that would, that would be, this naming, the naming, the naming of this room would be effective to June first would help, so we don't have to, because then it'd become, well, what's the name of it? And then I just don't want there to be a legal challenge by anyone saying, I didn't know what room it was in, and.
I think we should do it effective like January one, twenty twenty-four, because you never know what could get delayed or whatever.
Or I was going to say that this one, yeah.
Or even July one, make it effective July one. And we would plan something obviously similar to what.
It could be our first meeting in twenty twenty, fiscal twenty-one, when we do it then, we can do that idea.
Okay. So I think everybody is okay with adjusting the motion to say, renaming the room effective July first, twenty twenty. Everybody good with that amended motion? We won't give the county attorney time to get over here.
Yeah.
Call out my parliamentary procedure there. Is there any other discussion?
I hear footsteps.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to item nine, the consent agenda. Is there any questions about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Public comment, I know, did we have anybody over there?
No, there was no one at the other room. No, there was no one at the other room, but Jenny sent me a text and said there were only folks there, her and Debbie.
And we did not have anybody to call or read out for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll bring us to board comments. I'll start way down on the end with Commissioner Fur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to just say thank you to everyone that's on the front line, everything that they're doing, and I want them to know that as far as myself and the board, I know we're going to do everything we can do to get this back to the way it was.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Fur. Commissioner Almond?
Three quick things. Just want to say thanks to all those who helped pack meals last week for the school kids. I think we did, like, just the station I was at over Jalapenos, I think we did, like, close to two thousand meals, and they had a good little system going, so it was good. Thanks, everybody, for helping out. And Matt, I'm glad you're back and well.
Thank you.
And last but not least, just wanted to ask you guys to please be in prayer for our leaders. You know, they got a tough job, and like Tommy said, I'm not Governor Cooper's biggest fan either, but, you know, lift him up, President Trump, and the whole team, because we're all in this together.
Thank you, Commissioner Almond. Commissioner Morgan?
I'll just, you know, basically what, what those, previous commissioners said.
Commissioner Longham?
Talking about workers, never thought too much about truck drivers in America delivering all the goods they deliver, but man, they've done an awesome job, just like the cashiers and the stockers at the grocery store, doctors and nurses, naturally, the EMS. I mean, we've got a lot of folks that are doing hard work in crazy times. I've never seen anything like this. I don't, no one's ever seen anything like this. And there's a lot of people in our community that are afraid, and I wish they weren't, but I'm going to encourage anybody that sits on this board, if you know an elderly person that's sitting at home by themselves, and you know them, and you know their phone number, pick up the phone and give them a call, and tell them you're thinking about them. You probably do not know what that will mean to some person that's sitting at home by themselves and has been sitting, they've been quarantined for a long time, but please pick up the telephone and tell them you're thinking about them. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
I'm going to call you. Don't call me. It's almost time for past ten o'clock.
Right. You know, Commissioner Fur, you made a comment about getting back to normal. I, I, I don't think there's a normal to go back to. I think our nation is forever changed. And I had, that doesn't have to be a bad thing. We, we've learned, I guarantee you, more people are washing their hands than ever happened in life. Everybody knows what Germex is now. Nobody knew what it was before, but now it's like gold, I mean, if you, if you can find it, it's like gold bars. You know, there, we do have to get back to business, to the business of doing business as a county, as a state. Those out there that, maybe the four of you that might watch this, you know, we are going to do the best that we can. We're doing the best we can every day. If you can think of something we haven't thought of, let us know. We all have an email address. We're always, you know, we're, we're all looking for answers, too. We don't necessarily pretend to have them because no one's ever dealt with this. No state, no, no, nobody in Washington, nobody in any, any, any governor's office in any state in the entire United States or anywhere in the world has ever dealt with this before. The Board of Commissioners is, is going to have the challenges that we are going to have ahead of us in the coming months as the fallout from this thing hits us and the decisions that we have to make. And we're going to make mistakes, and we're going to make the wrong decisions from time to time, and that's okay, we're human. I hope you'll, you'll be patient with us. I hope that you will let us know if you think we've done something wrong, and you'll, you'll tell us what you thought we could have done better, because God knows I'm good for doing that. If I think somebody's done something wrong, I'm the first to let you know, but I try to give advice to, to resolve it instead of just complaining about it. If the one thing the public can do is have faith that we're working for you, the state's working for you, you know, do, do what you can, but continue to slow the spread of this. You know, if you go out in public, you got a mask, put it on, wear it, you know. Can't all have a cool Batman mask like me, but if you got one, wear it. If you don't have one, get one. There are people out there making them. Just be safe, you know? If six foot is the minimum, don't, don't be an, an underachiever. Go for ten feet, you know? Wear a mask anytime you leave the house. Just, just do what you can to help make it better, and the one thing that you can do is help us stop spreading this. And as soon as we can get back to work, we'll get back to work. I bless everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Barbie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with him on that. I think that our businesses here in the county are doing a great job, and believe it or not, I think Walmart's kind of been one of the leaders, and as they also passed a regulation date, you can't come in the store unless you got a mask on. So I'm, I'm proud of what Walmart's stepping up and doing, and I know we got some, a lot of folks out there are just, I'm paranoid, they're scared to death, and they got a good right to be because when this first came out, nobody knew what was going on, and they said, "Oh, don't go out and run by all these masks because the healthy people need them to..." "You don't even need a mask," because unless you're sick yourself. And then now they're turning around, "And where can you wear a mask?" So we're getting so many mixed things out here that's been put out to the public. No one of them's scared to death. And I'm hoping that the testing will come and prove to be a better way of doing things. There's just so much stuff out there we don't know about. I, I think our citizens are smart enough to know how to handle themselves. Maybe when they're going to some of these stores like Lowe's and stuff, they're in a big hurry and run over you trying to get in and out, where if you just take your time and keep your distance, things would be better. And if I ride through a parking lot and there's not two or three parking places in there, I'm going to wait and come back another time. I'm not going to force myself in there. I've been fortunate enough to be working my part-time, full-time job, counted as essential, but I've been lucky enough to stay away from everyone. So I've kind of been out in the country, out in the open, and have not been packed in among everybody, so. But I think the way this country's going, we need to pray for our leaders, just like Commissioner Almond said, and, you know, I think prayer right now is going to be the biggest thing to get us through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. My only comment tonight, I, you know, I, I would really like to thank everybody that reached out to me. I know almost, actually, every one of you guys did, and the county staff reached out. When I found out I was sick, I kind of let them know because I had been around them, so I didn't want them to, you know, hear it from somebody else, but the, you know, newspaper kind of made it sound like I was on my deathbed there for a little bit. I really wasn't, and I, but I do appreciate all those that reached out, and I appreciate all the prayers and offers of help and, you know, offers to bring groceries by the house. That was really appreciated, and I just wanted to say thanks for that. And I will reiterate the opinion from several tonight, pray for our leaders. I, I express the fact that I don't necessarily agree with the governor, but I'll still pray for him to make the right decision, and I, I think that's what we have to do, and then we can go from there. If there's no other questions or comment, we'll seek a motion to adjourn until May eleventh at six P.M.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.